Hi guys. Okay, so this is Planning Commission meeting of June 4th, 2018. We'll start the meeting at 7:38. All rise with the flag, the Legion's please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call?
Henderson, here. Henderson, here. Shaw?
Yep.
Simpson?
Here.
Sledge?
Here.
Selicki?
Yep, here. Okay, so I'll go to approval of agenda. Can I do this?
Um, okay.
So, number six, it says training, so it's kind of what we're doing. But how about we put it as ordinance review? And if there's no other changes, a motion to approve as amended?
Sold.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so moved. Okay, now we're going to minutes of the last meeting of May 7th. Another fine job by our recording secretary, Ms. Henderson. You're gonna have to mess up at least once, you know?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
We watch hard, but... Motion to approve minutes of May 7th, 2018, as presented?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, okay. Now we're on to the ordinance review. So our assignment was Article 1 and 2. Anybody have anything on page 1? Okay. Well, the only, I do. So I kind of got stuff. Not all of it is. So, Section 105, A, necessary fees and expenditures. Fees, charges, and expenses shall be assessed as part of the application review for matters pertaining to this ordinance to defray expenses incurred in a process, in the processing of such applications. I'd like to put in there that some of the fees are kind of put, i.e., community planner, engineer, or village engineer, village attorney, all to be determined over existing fees. So our fee schedule is our fees, but everything else says "to be determined", and that's the professional stuff. So if we listed that right in the beginning, so we don't have to, but...
Okay. So you're saying these are in addition to?
Correct.
I would say to say that somewhere that it does not include professional fees, because those are covered in the escrow fees.
Yes, but you don't know...
But I would say, right plain as day, this does not include...
Yes, because the escrow, you don't know, I don't think we've ever done an escrow.
Well, that's kind of what we do, that's kind of what we do with, like, Fritz.
Oh, okay, yes, you're right.
So we do do it on the big jobs, but...
We don't do it on small jobs.
We wanted sure people understand that they're not getting that application feedback, they're only going to get any escrow fees, but the application fee is the flat fee.
Yeah.
The only question I have is section...
Good point.
105, what you said, A. Seems to contradict or double cover Section 11.16.
That's a performance guarantee, and that doesn't contradict...
Yeah, but it says a fee is between 100 and 1,000. So that, this one says it's set by the council, that one says it's...
Oh, no, that's a fine.
Yeah, that's a fine.
That's a fine.
Fees, yeah, fines and fees are two different things. Fee is what you pay for your driver's license, a fine is what you pay for when you go speeding. So what do you think? Hi, Becky?
For simplistic reasons, I agree. It should somewhere specifically state that this does not include fees for professional services.
Okay, so you get to work it.
But you are right about what it says in C regarding the professional services though, too.
And that's fine, that's part of the escrow.
That's totally different.
So they understand, if this is just telling them that their application fee is not going to include professional fees.
The escrow shall be used to pay professional reviews as engineers, community planners, and any other professional.
Right.
So that's kind of what you're going to take the one, number one, and add it to A, but it doesn't include it.
Yeah.
Alright.
So it's just that, I kind of read the things that you did, that it's included on the next page, but it's all spelled out right here, so that there's no question.
Second.
So how about page 3?
That's whether we want them or not.
What was that, Chris?
It said, I really don't know.
Yeah, me too.
It's what that was. And then again, it's the performance guarantee. And the escrow, it's just their execution, or our execution on them is fairly limited, but I don't see anything that stands out as being problematic or gives us an issue.
And most of that is handled by Dennis. So Dennis can, a big project like Fritz could handle performance guarantee.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, hearing nothing on page 2, let's move to page 3.
Oh, I guess that's the first time I ever read D that way. But I'm okay then.
So I've got something on 107, right at the very heading.
In A, oh, at the heading, okay.
So, says building inspector shall have the authority to grant permits and to make inspections of structures and sites necessary to carry out his duties in the enforcement of this ordinance. I'd like to include in there upon Planning Commission approval when applicable.
That's a good idea.
Because it doesn't say, not everything that he inspects goes through planning, but some of the things that he inspects does go through planning.
Say that one more time, how do you want to word it?
Upon Planning Commission approval when applicable.
When applicable, okay.
So how about zoning permits?
Let's, yeah, that's right stopped here, not too bad.
I don't even know what a zoning permit is.
I don't either.
So I thought we should put zoning permits in the definitions, and it's not there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I remember that one. So it's basically saying is if it's not in here, we're going to call it a zoning permit instead. It's kind of the catch-all.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we know if our code of ordinances covers this kind of stuff, any permits as well?
Your code of ordinance covers that you have to comply with all the Michigan State Building Code.
Yeah. But there are some specific code of ordinances that the village has, isn't there?
Well, there are, but when it comes to permits and things like that, that's covered by...
Alright, we're not worried about stepping on there, stepping on the toes of that with whatever we got there.
No.
No, a couple of years ago, they adopted everything, they adopted the voca code book in entirety.
Okay.
Isn't that correct? Alright, yeah.
The whole, too?
Yeah. Okay, so hearing nothing further on page 3. Did you have anything on 3? Larry? No? Christie?
On...
I don't want to go too fast.
C5. I was wondering if we shouldn't have a time limit on the reason. It says, "In all cases where building inspector shall refuse to issue a permit, the cause and reasons for such refusal shall be provided in writing to the applicant."
I think there is a timeframe, but I don't know what that is.
I don't know if there's one according to the building code or not, that one I'd have to look up.
Well, but you're already saying in 3, he's got 10 days to issue a permit after the application.
Right, right. Or it doesn't say if he refuses it for whatever purpose, how long he has...
It still has, it's within 10 days.
So it still has to...
I would, I would assume the 10-day thing applies, applies.
Yeah, I do too.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Page 4. Well, this is, just kind of give you an idea what I did, or what Becky and I did. So we emailed Dennis the permits one, so the 107. And, so that included 1-3, 1-4, 1-5, 1-6, 1, pardon, 1-7, and I think 109. Wasn't that correct?
Okay, so...
Yeah, okay, so that's it. So we're waiting Mr. Lemieux to give us a response on those. So, okay. So 4, anybody have anything on 4? Page 4. So, when you're doing this at home, I would suggest that you read it, and then either with a pencil or pen or a highlighter, mark your spots so that when we get to that page, because this is the, tonight's going to be the easiest thing that we do.
Yeah.
So after tonight, it's going to get tougher. So we need to kind of just go page 1, page 2, page 3, and you've got to be able to go right to where your problems are and what you want to do with it.
Because in theory, the book's going to be rewritten and redone anyway, so to mark this all up is not a huge deal.
Okay, yeah.
I use the orange highlighter so it stands out and hits me in the face.
I have no color, no clue of mine of where's the highlighter.
Okay, so hearing nothing on 4.
Well, hang on, so I was trying to look and I was looking to see if there was something in sight plan 4, too, between the revocation of permit in 10, 12 days, so if it's... There's no action by planning on that?
No. Once it's approved by planning, we're done. So, we have nothing, the only thing we can do is let the building inspector know that, actually, we should give the building inspector enough information that he's going to know if they don't proceed towards our goals. So, but if they don't, we could only tell the building inspector, and then the building inspector is also the code enforcer, so he has the wherewithal to do something about it. We can't do anything about it. The only thing we can do is kind of report. So it's really up to Dennis, or the code enforcer, building inspector, whoever that is at the time. So, and I kind of do expect to hear something from Mr. Lemieux on some of this. Because I doubt that he had anything to do with this one. And I really didn't think about it till yesterday, last night.
I was just thinking about the revocation.
Well, we can...
Duration-wise, just, but that, okay, it's fine. I really think we have 10 days, so as he finds something, he gets 10 days.
How about we'll ask Dennis?
Well, we do, you're right. Anything that is in violation of any ordinance, any, any part of their permit, the letter that he directs me to send to them, gives them 10 days the first time for the violation.
So when's the ticket get issued then?
You wouldn't get a ticket for a violation of a building permit. I think if you continue, you just...
You could be issued a ticket if you're given a stop work order. If you're given a stop work order because you're not complying by the terms of the permit, and you don't stop, then yes, he would, he could, he could issue it.
Then that's different.
We try not to issue any tickets, because it's really just a lengthy process. We try and work with everybody, you know, to tell us if they can't do 10 days, it's going to take in two weeks, we, we do try and work with people.
Yeah, it's complex to do that. Okay. So then we're moving along to page 1-5. So, this was Ms. Henderson's thing on defined reoccupancy. I think that it kind of is obvious what it is, but it's not obvious what it is. So, I think that we should have that in the definitions. And maybe have a little bit of what a reoccupen, like in parentheses, what reoccupancy is.
Well, and the amazing thing to me is if you look down at part C, part 2, it says if a non-residential occupancy change, well, that's a reoccupancy, basically.
Yes.
So, any, anything like that is, should be in the definition. Can't be residential, because every time you sell a house, you don't need a new certificate of occupancy. We don't require that, we don't require any inspections if you sell a house. But the non-residential is the key part.
Okay, my, the only question would be, in your, in the 1.11B...
Correct.
It says certificate is required, but let's use the dance studio as an example.
Okay.
I'm sure the certificate of occupancy is meant to issue for that.
Correct.
Okay, now, someone comes along, decides to change that into apartments, does the same certificate supply?
No.
No.
Okay, does it, where does it say that?
Well, they have to, that's a whole new person.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're even...
So if a whole new person requires a property to have the certificate of occupancy, okay.
Correct. In a reoccupancy, my concern with reoccupancy is person A owns the dance studio, but they sell it, they close it down, it's not open for six months, but person B reopens it as a dance studio. That needs to be, it's a new person, and it needs to get a new certificate of occupancy. That's a reoccupancy.
Or, or reoccupancy could even be, Madam B owns a dance studio, she kind of gets sick and quits for a while, she's now in remission, and she's healthy again, and three years later, she wants to open up. Same business, same location.
Correct.
But now that, that would be a reoccupancy, a total reoccupancy. Same business, same owner, same building, but it's lapsed three years or a period of time.
Period of time.
Should you, you know, and that should, in essence, require another certificate of occupancy, because you'd want to go and do inspection on a building, do this, do this, do that.
Correct. So that's really what your definition has to say, too. Not only that it could be a change...
Are you saying you want to put it in, you want to put it in C2?
I, no.
No, you see, it could be any commercial, any commercial or industrial or office.
No, I got it.
No, he's saying there's a note in the book.
In, no, oh, in section...
Maybe it's about residential.
In section C2.
Correct, but section...
Where it says non-residential occupancy, do you want to say with, but do you want to also say in a reoccupancy?
It says occupancy change, it doesn't matter, because that's occupancy change. No.
Okay.
That's just my question, my, my, my quickie ding is, you know, right down the road, it tells you kind of what a reoccupancy...
Wait a minute, you're what?
So I want to define reoccupancy in the back of the book, so that there's no question. And like Ben said, it could be, I'd like it to be, again, you're going to have to say non-residential in the definition, also, it doesn't apply to houses. Change in, in person, ownership or occupancy, or a timeframe, pick a timeframe that there's, that...
That it's been shut down.
That it's been idle.
Right, that you have...
I think the way to define it would be reoccupancy of any business that does not, any building that has a business that does not change the business. So that would be a reoccupancy. So that, so any, so that would mean anything, it could be, no matter who owned it, when they went to reoccupy it, with the new owner or same owner. But it would be the same building, same business.
What about the timeframe?
Well...
Is that somewhere in the...
So, timeframe, right.
If you're shut down, you're shut down. So that would be the thing, if you're shut down, and then you could put a timeframe in there, too. We put it, so the only thing we're doing right now is, okay, let's go through this, let's highlight some stuff.
We want to say...
We'll ask the planner to come up with a definition. When we get that definition, we'll look at it, say, okay, this is what we like. We'll ask for his suggestion, should he have a timeframe in there, you got this, you have this, then we'll kind of do this. So this is a multi-stage process. Right now, we're defining what we think that we want to adjust, and then, once the planner gets it, he's going to tell us, okay, you can adjust this, you can adjust this, you can't adjust this, and this is what you can do with what you're doing. Sound like a plan?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on page 1-5? Okay, we're going to 6.
I want to add, not more than 30 days.
Okay, I was saying, I do, I remember I was having a discussion on that.
It used to be not less than 5 and not more than 15.
It was 15, yeah.
But now they just say not less than 15.
So that's going to be up in the state, so what's the state law, so...
This is what, this is what the...
It's copied directly from it.
This coincides with the Michigan Zoning, Planning, and Enabling Act.
Yep.
But we can, we'll ask him, but I'm sure that we can say not less than 15 days, but not more than 30 days.
So then, so that's in Section 1-1, 2, A1. So, but I want to do something in A. So it says, general public hearing procedures, following procedures are applicable to all public hearings, zoning ordinance text, and map amendments. I also want to put in SALU.
Let's see.
Because they're subject to all the same things of the public hearing.
All public hearings.
So special approval land use. So it's all the same procedure.
Yeah, but what do you want to add in A though, Ben?
Well, it says...
The following procedures are applicable to all public hearings.
To all public hearings, zoning ordinance...
Period.
And map text are subject to the additional procedures. I want to split zoning ordinance text, map amendments, and special approval land use.
To these other procedures?
Are subject to the additional procedures.
Okay, got it.
Everybody in agreement? Okay. So, and then we're going to ask for the planner on a duration of not to exceed.
Correct.
Okay. Any...
In two spots.
Yeah, two spots, yes.
The publication in the paper, and then in Section D, the personal mailed notice.
Yeah.
That's both spots that we have to go.
Yeah.
Alright, so all it does say under that is just say go back to 112, okay.
And not more than 30 is what we're adding.
Well, if, if that's allowed.
Yeah, if that's allowed, that's what we'd like to do.
Anything else on page 6? Okay, let's go on to page 7. Anybody have anything on page 7?
I don't think I ever did anything on 6.
Okay, so I do again. So, we have B, zoning ordinance amendment procedures, and then C, pre-hearing examination. So I want to move C to D, and D, E, and all that kind of stuff, and have C as special approval land use. And then, kind of have a special approval land use definition, or a little blur, blub, blurb, blub. What do we get?
Quickie ding.
Yeah, there we go. And then C, Section 17. So again, they omitted special approval land use in this section.
So you want to put a C in that says SALU, help everyone else, everything else down, one?
Yeah, yeah.
And under SALU, you want to tell it to go to the other section?
Yeah. So the other ones that are doing that, too, so given this, you go to this section, given this, and Section 17 will, is on special approval land use. The whole section is on special approval land use. So not only are we trying to update the book, I think we're trying to make the book a little more fluid so that, you know, when you're looking at one section, you don't have to go through that whole section and go three-quarters of the way through the book to find out, oh, I got to do this, too. So what I'm trying to do with this is, you know, in the public hearing procedures, let's put special land use in there, too.
Didn't the public hearing one used to also talk about the rules for your public hearing?
What do you mean?
Didn't it used to say, like, you had, what is that, what's that called, Richard's Rules, and...
I talked about that, that's a good, that's a good one.
How you do your public comment, whether, you know, it's, you know, there's talk, then there's you get, and then there's that, but there's no, you know...
That's a good point, so that should be right kind of in the very beginning, if we do that. So, kind of like, it's an excellent point, I'm glad you brought it up, because you, if you do that, then it should state that, you know, you go into a special approval meeting, and you do your introduction, you have your discussion, you have a public comment, and then you have to do whatever you're doing with that special approval, and then you go out of that special approval and go back into your meeting. So you're right, there should be guidelines. So that could be in here, where it says, but I don't know if it's in 17.
I didn't see it there either, but I thought, God, I thought I remembered something about that. Or was it also, you know, where, too, like our starting time, all that stuff, too, you know, it can't be before this and that, and...
Right.
You know, the rules of engagement and whatnot, but I didn't remember something on that before.
I, I, I think this is the proper place to put that, because it's not in that Section 17. So, good call. You got that?
I got that, but I don't, I've seen that on a loose piece of paper, but I have not seen that in the book. So, I'll have to find it.
Okay. So, and we'll insert that somewheres. Well, okay, so we'll insert that in, under the new Section C, in a 1, 2, or 3. Procedure. Sound good? Christie?
Yeah.
Larry? Chris?
Just for S A L U, instead of just the general public hearing procedure?
That's what I was thinking, up in the front paragraph, under.
I was thinking it was in A. It does apply to the other, but not wondering if there shouldn't be, there's a two, two of, uh, S A L U's a little different, but yet.
Or, you're right, well, you know what? It, um, it, it wouldn't just be under S A L U, it should be all, under all public hearings. Yeah, yeah. So it, it, it's not in here, so it, it, okay, so let's get rid of this and stick this in here somewhere. So it should be, um, general public hearing procedures.
Right.
So, um, one, two, three, four, um, mail notice, content, and then it should be number four.
Right, before B.
Yeah, yeah. Number four would be procedure. Okay. I like it. Okay, page one dash eight, impact assessments. So it isn't something that we do very often. An, an example of an impact assessment would be something that planner did on Britt's phase three, if you remember, uh, he said that the, what was that street going in there? Franklin?
Yeah.
Though Franklin wasn't a collector's street, it was just a residential street, and it wasn't designed for the traffic of a thirty-one home unit, uh, go into that. So that was one of the reasons he stated, uh, that was against approval of that project. So that's, um, that's just one example, but that's an example that we got recently. So another example of a traffic assessment would be, um, Vinkers, when they came in before they opened up the store, uh, um, I had talked to them about opening up a, um, an entrance onto Fulton Street and not just have it on Main Street. So that wasn't a traffic impact study, that was just an assessment. So, but I think that's working well. So in a small town, you can do a lot of stuff just because you know it, you know, rather than, uh, like I, I knew somebody in a small town, uh, similar size to ours with a small DPW, the village, uh, governing body paid somebody, an engineering firm to come in and map out all the potholes. So the DPW supervisor was a friend of mine, he said, you know, they charge him twenty-four hundred bucks. If they would've gave me twenty-four hundred dollars worth of, uh, uh, funds, I would've went and bought the coal patch, and me and another guy would've fixed all the potholes for twenty-four hundred bucks. Okay, so, um.
I got nothing on A.
Yeah, me either.
It's been, as you said, but it's, it's a good, it's a good section.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've had success using the various elements of it.
Larry? Good? Mike?
Yeah.
Christie?
Thanks.
Okay, one dash nine. So again, this is kind of more Ed's, or not Ed's, but Dennis's Mr. Muse thing more than ours.
Haven't been a couple. It says B, under B two, it says circuit.
B two?
Yeah.
What it's?
I thought it started as just district court.
Or circuit, pursuit of circuit court approval.
Are we still Thursdays over at the Romeo Court, is that our day? So, I didn't know you ever had to go to Circuit Court. That would be going to Mount Clemens.
Yeah, no, we go to Romeo. So it's district.
I think it's, I, yeah, the question is, I thought it was district. And then, um, one underneath it in C. The building inspector, okay, well, I guess it does say, may authorize additional persons to issue civil infractions?
Yeah, so if he's out of town, he can, uh, he can appoint like a deputy, and he can also ask the police department to do it. Council can also ask the same, the same thing. Okay, um, if we can, so then, we are, we are gonna check into Chris's thing on sixteen, one sixteen, B two, whether it's circuit or district court. Okay, so then how about article two, um, page two dash one?
Even if it just says courts, but with capital C, I mean, we don't, we don't care who it is, it's just.
As long as it gets.
Yeah, yeah. You sure don't want to have the wrong one. Yeah, you don't want to call your girlfriend by her name, your last girlfriend, right? Okay, so, um, we have a parking district.
Mm-hmm, I see that.
So, do we really need a parking district?
By the way. Oh, it isn't what I thought it was, okay.
Is there one on the map?
Yeah.
No. There's a designation for it, but there's no.
Oh, look above, uh, C two.
Yeah, I shouldn't say that.
On Main Street?
Yeah.
No, that's per.
So, but there, okay, but there's nothing there.
No, there's none.
What is the?
That's right next.
Public lot?
Um.
Zone base.
Yeah, what is, hold on, that's like right here.
Oh, the public parking.
Yeah. The next.
Yeah.
That's that public parking.
Yeah. Are they considered?
So where the, where the two public lots are, are not designated on their zoning.
That's what I'm figuring, I'm looking, oh, it's gotta be the one behind Cozy, and like, oh, that's not there.
So speaking of mans.
And then the one by Esso's place, right?
Right.
Right, yeah, behind, yeah, south of API. So.
So what's a parking district?
If you kind of look at the definition, it's not really village lots, it's, it's lots where, and if we, if we keep that, in the definition, it says that, um, business owners should get together to purchase property and make it into a multiple-use parking lot.
Right.
Or a parking lot for, for multiple businesses. So I like the idea, um, I, I guess for, I don't know how long, over a decade, I tried to get the business owners to throw in money.
Yeah.
To do a parking lot, and nobody wanted to do it. One, one guy, one guy wanted to do it, nobody else. Can't afford it. If you have more people, maybe you could afford it. Didn't have to drive around the block a bunch of times to find a parking place. Okay, so, um, what do you, you want, leave it?
I think you can leave it, I have a job.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe we're excited.
Maybe in the future.
Yeah, someday.
Fifty years from now.
Perfect.
Okay, so if, then we're.
Traffic impact study.
Right.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so we go from single-family districts to multiple. Somewhere's in there I want to insert duplex, because there's nothing in here about a duplex.
Nothing in there about condos either.
That's a, that's a whole different thing.
Does it go under multiple family?
Well, um, a condo complex is, is, is in multiple, but condo complex is a planned development. So that's different.
Now, speaking of that though, and I don't know where if it's gonna show up, you remember what Dale talked about, because that was the first time I heard that one, when we talked about site condominiums?
Mm-hmm.
He indicated that a more common one is where, right, you own air now?
Yes.
That's not a site condominium. What's the process there, and is it different? And then, and again, we're out, it's out of whack with this, or, but it just made me think when it, when he said that last time, I'm like, and I, and I went out and checked the, uh, Vic, uh, McVickers and a couple of, hmm, interesting, how the heck would we handle that? Because we've never seen one of those before. You know, it is the, I know site condominium, and again, with the state, we, we can, we have alignment, but this is a new, is this a loophole? You know, is it, so, and not, and it's not about the fact that something, as we get to that section, or do we need another section on, or have a part B to condominiums?
Well, um, so we could ask the planner about that one. That would go into multiple family, uh, residential area. So, um, asks.
Are we sure about that one?
Sure.
Reason I say that is.
The density.
In nineteen, the intent of this art is to ensure that all site kind subdivisions are blah, 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 if, if for, uh, single-family residential subdivision development. Page nineteen.
Oh, article nineteen?
Article nineteen, yes.
I was doing it just because of density.
Talks about the density right there. The density intensity of.
Because when I talked to the planner, when I talked to Brian Keithy, the only way that his project would have gone through was multiple, even though with single-family, um, uh, it was the density factor. So we have nothing to allow that high of a density. So if you did a condo project with our.
Well, it's true, because it says on the very last one to be, your density and the lot can't, uh, basically it has to be, it has to comply with the subdivision regulations.
Yeah. Oh, that's single family.
So then they could never put in condos based on that, the way that's written, right?
No, you could.
No, you, yeah, you could.
That if we gave them special.
No, no, you could put, you could put it in, it's just that it's the density factor that was the problem, Mike. It wasn't the condos, it was the density factor.
Yeah. They wouldn't be able to get the lot sizes and the number in at that point, they'd have had them increased them to meet the code or meet our ordinance, and then they could've called them in.
Right, what, what that is, it's saying spacing, unless it would be part of parcel or subdivision, getting courts with the bill of, I mean, the subdivision regulations. So then if you had more of that set, but that would be what, uh, uh, whatever the specs are for a subdivision lot?
Yep, that's in our, right, with a couple of sections over, gives you the size, but what are we, seventy by one twenty now? Is that that eighty-four hundred square feet or something?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, and if you're gonna deep in, that's where the plan, plan development comes into play then, at that point. All right, so Ben, you started that, not to, not to derail, derail that discussion, but we did have the whole group here with the duplex and the church thing.
Yeah.
Which I'm assuming is what, what made us think about it.
We, we could do something where we added the condo thing in here, but, um, I don't know, you got a whole section in it, so.
Yeah, whole section, I don't care. So the only condo that got me was, is that, that new form of, you know, that new type of condo, it's not just a site condominium.
Yeah, so, but I still want to insert into the single-family thing, the, uh, the duplex. All right, so, you can only be, um, on a main street, a main street in a corner, is it just a main street? It used to be a main street or a corner. So it used to have, so there's a condo on, what's over, what's the next street over? Uh, that goes all the way, Spencer, Spencer.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Yeah, Spencer, and then the, then the offshoot that goes to the bus garage.
Yeah.
There's a condo on that.
That's a condominium.
That's not, excuse me, I misspoke, that's a duplex.
Yeah.
A Spencer?
Yeah, right on the right side, so when you're on the east side, right before the drive that goes to the middle school.
Yeah.
About right there behind.
No, don't go to the middle school, go to the garage, go to the.
Yeah, but it does go, it does connect to the loop to the middle school. You can go into, you can go right through to the garage, or you can go take the loop right to the gym door.
There's a little red bench on one side, and Spears, great big one, on the other side.
Yeah, Spears is a duplex.
The great big one is a duplex.
Ah.
I think it's white, white sided.
Yeah. And Charlie Clark's house used to be a duplex. Remember Charlie Clark's?
It was a room-to-rent kind of deal.
Yeah, it was kind of like a boarding house.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
You also have a duplex on, um.
There's a.
On Prospect, that's the one I was trying to go up with.
Prospect Fair, yeah, Fair Prospect.
Is the one right here on, just south of, uh?
Yeah, there's another one on Spencer too, yeah.
Great one by Prospect, yeah. Right before the Vinkier? Two doors down from the Vinkier side.
No, they, um.
There was supposed to be a bed and breakfast when that woman bought it, but, okay.
No, it's all single.
Yeah, it was single, but it was gonna be a bed and breakfast, you're right. So she was able to do that because it was commercial, right? Is that commercial?
That was before me. But she doesn't have it, her son, her daughter-in-law.
Yeah, she, they never did it, I don't think. Okay, so we're okay about, so we'll just get with Brian about where, how and where to put that duplex thing in, how to word it, but we're okay about sticking that into the single family? Okay?
The weird thing always is Ben, is, is you said, and I think maybe that's where it also came from too, was, that one says multiple family resident, but then if you look under duplex, it says two family or duplex dwellings in our table, you know, on section four.
Section.
Section four, when we do the, when we do the permitted and the special approval, because a duplex says is permitted under, in our M, but is by special approval under our one.
Okay. Yeah, but we don't need a special, did we need to do a special approval?
No, we didn't.
But we did nickels.
We did.
But, but okay, but nickels wasn't on the corner, or on the main block, I think somewheres.
I couldn't find that when you told me.
I could, yeah.
No? Because, okay, so that, then, then we need to do that. That was in the old ordinance, and this ordinance was written, um, is there, and there's not a copy of the old one, is there?
Absolutely, yes.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay, so I like that. So that one was, that's the old one?
That's the last one.
Hold on, what's the date, I'll say that one.
So this one's got my name on it?
No, this one.
This is the one we.
Well, this is, this is, that's, this is the current one, right?
No, it's not.
On the three?
If you look at public hearings in there, it's not.
Amendments through two thousand and twelve.
Where's the right option thing, is that right in front?
It's over, but it's not there. Here is, um, the one before that one. Here's the book before that book.
This is two, no, this is two thousand and two, that's, that's our current one.
Two thousand and two.
Yeah.
Yeah, as I said, that's.
This is our.
That looks like the one we did.
No, because our current one says with amendments adopted in two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, but the, the only thing, the two thousand and twelve thing.
You want to.
There's even one before that.
Yeah.
I don't see it, it was in a brown. Because when we did that, I remember going through when we did that one, the two thousand, the two thousand and two, when I came on board, right when that was being, when that was adopted. So I didn't, so I didn't get my name on the cover, I missed it by a little bit.
So you've been at it since oh two, the planning commission?
Yeah, yeah, for, for a stretch. Uh, what is it? I moved out, and I was, I was working out of state in oh six, I came back in ten. So oh two to six, and then ten to present.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
That's eighty-five.
That sounds probably about right, I don't remember. Oh, it's a, that's the.
I'm pretty sure that.
No.
I, I know we did a master plan, I'm almost positive we did zoning ordinance. I'm pretty sure that, I know we did a master plan, I'm almost positive we did zoning ordinance. Under my tenure, my first one.
Well, I couldn't find any of that when I cleaned all the doors open. I kept one copy of everything I had.
Well, who, okay, so who did this one? Was, would it say who, the planner? Who's the planner? McKenna?
McKenna did it.
Okay, so McKenna, McKenna would have done it. So we still have McKenna, don't we? Okay, so then we should be able to ask them. So that should, this was two thousand and two, I got off in two thousand and one, so it would have been prior to two thousand and one.
Okay.
Between eighty-five and oh-one.
And it might have been that it started at, and then resigned. But I know that it used to be somewheres that it was, you could do a duplex without a special approval. As long as it's on a main street, it was on a corner.
Okay. We got it now is it's special approval only in R1. But if you're in R1, you can put it anywhere you want.
And duplexes usually are in single-family areas, they're not usually in multiples. I'm gonna keep this for a while.
Ooh, you better return it. If you have a duplex where they are actually renting both sides, which is the Prospect Street, or you're saying Spears on Spencer is a duplex, that's one family.
Doesn't matter, it's zoned, it's what it's zoned at. It's what it's approval at, is.
Except...
By the way, do we have to give them two addresses?
There's something by usage, and there's something by what it was approved as, so...
Do we have to give two addresses?
Yeah, it's got two addresses.
So all duplexes should have.
Spears doesn't.
Spears only has one.
I'm wondering if that one didn't come out and it was converted.
Well, when that guy bought Charlie Clark's house, we told him it was no longer duplex.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But see, now those ones, Charlie Clark's and Spears' house, those are all, you can access every section of that house from inside. There's no division.
Well, I'm not gonna say what they did. I remember they came into the planning commission for that process.
But I mean, of course, but I'm just wondering what makes it...
Whether they went through that process and finalized it, I can't tell you.
Right.
Because at that time, we didn't assess property, street numbers where we do now. So if it, when it went through, it would have signed the number. Back then, Edison did it, so, you know, I can just say what it was approved as, what it is, I don't know. But it was approved as a duplex. So whether they did it or not, who...
All right, so what do we want to say here about duplexes?
I just wanted to inserted that...
Includes it?
That includes it, and I really would like to entertain the fact that we allow duplexes. So we'll check with the planner again, but I'd like to have duplexes allowed on Fulton or Main Street, or on a corner.
In addition to, without having a...
Without, in a permitted, as a permitted use.
Permitted use. So right now, there'll only be two locations, um, three.
Or you want to just leave it as everything is special approval?
Well, the first part of it simply is defining, because that was one of the things that people had hard to go in as to what is a duplex, where does it fall?
Right.
So I think you got that, then the secondary part of it is, okay, when we get into this part of special approval and permitted uses, when we get to number four, then we can... Well, we can think about a house, Spearhead, wherever we want to go with it. I have no issue with you, say, if you find, especially if there's a previous one, adding a, to two-one-oh-three, adding something with, and even a one-oh-four, both, put in both, something about a duplex.
Okay.
As whatever the planner would want, I don't know.
So how about, so what do you got?
Same thing you got. Oh, Ben, what are you...
I just got one, you got a whole big book.
It's a simple question.
Here, twenty bucks, I'll give you twenty bucks. Okay, so can we move on to page two-two? But we pretty much already did that one, too. So anybody got questions on office or central business? Excuse me, the only thing that I had...
It's interesting how that one starts to talk, sound like the master, like it wants to be a master plan.
Kinda, yeah. So the only thing I did, I didn't have anything on two-two, other than kind of ask Brian about Chris's thing about the condo thing. But on section two-one-oh-six on page two-three, I'd like something in there where it says that the C1, second and third floor areas could be residential, residentially occupied.
Oh.
It's not in there.
Oh, yeah, the one...
You're right.
It says not the bottom floor, but okay.
No, there was talking, one thing that's always still hitting me on this one is after, when we did it oh-two, I remember someone was talking about that there was maybe, what's it, oh-three, oh-four, oh-five timeframe, that it wasn't in here because the state was saying you could not, it was not permitted to have residential above anymore. So that was killing all the downtown, you know, the old downtowns. You weren't gonna be allowed to have.
I did hear that, too.
Really?
No, I don't know if it went through, or how it went through, but I do remember, because that freaked people out.
Yeah.
Because even here, like the, what was that on the corner?
And I don't think that's true, because even in the big municipalities, the big thing now is a loft. And loft is downstairs and residence upstairs.
But it wasn't, it did come back.
Well, I'm not...
I'm okay with that, I say, that's why it wasn't here. I think there was a thing that you couldn't do that. Even in Romeo, when they took them a long time to build that site, they brought the brick set up they have on the southwest side of Vandite there, just south of the main downtown area. I mean, that took a long time before that popped up, but...
It's because they had no parking.
Well, that's right, though, I don't think it was permitted for a chunk of time. But so add it now would be just to make sure it's not there, which I agree, I don't think, I think it's fine now, but I think that's why it wasn't here.
I thought it was all parking.
It wasn't permitted.
There's, you have to have a Volkswagen Beetle to get in there. It's worse than I made a corners.
Yeah.
I made a corners, though. Okay.
So just the C1?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because there's nothing in the...
Differentiate C2.
C2 that has a second floor. Well, I guess, I guess there is a second floor, but that's not C2, it's all, because it's Dr. Julie and Dr. Tucker's have second floor. And Dr. Julie's second floor, I mean, I guess somebody could live up there. I think she's got three floors. Maybe only two, two.
So, second floor plus. Like you're saying, residence?
Yeah.
What was the other part of that, was there two?
Well, it was second and third floor, so I made a corners has a third floor, Dr. Khan has a third floor. So you gotta list the third floors also.
Well, I was saying, yeah, it's called the second floor plus anything, second, third, fourth, whatever, until you max out or pipe limit.
Yeah, second floor, second floor and above.
Second floor and above. Could be a commercial or whatever zone, and then, or residential?
Yeah, or residential.
Yeah, that's fair. And they're gonna have, there's other building codes that go with that now, too, with the air conditioning and all that crap. Watershed roof pitches, all that stuff, so, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so the next one is parking district, and we decided to keep it, and there's really nothing that we have to do with parking, so... So, and then the last page, two-five, anybody have anything on this one? Ah, they told you somewheres.
Did you find your main street in the corner?
Think you found it in the original stone tablets, or what?
Pretty much. So how about re-mit everybody? Well, what's, yeah, what sections are you in?
Well, in this one, these numbers are all funky. It's fifteen point one-eight, two-family dwellings and accessory apartments. Two-family dwellings or accessory apartments may be permitted in the R1A, R1B, and RM district after approval by the village council, subject to the requirements of this ordinance and the following special conditions. A, the proposed units shall be located on Main or Fulton Streets, or on a corner lot, or the exterior lots of a subdivision. Minimum lot size shall be fifteen thousand square feet and shall be a minimum frontage of one hundred and twenty feet. The minimum floor area shall be seven hundred and fifty square feet for each two-bedroom unit, and nine hundred square feet for each three-bedroom unit. A temporary accessory apartment in owner-occupied, single-family dwellings may be permitted, provided that the apartment will be complete, separate housekeeping unit. Only one apartment will be created within a owner-occupied, single-family house. The owners of the residence in which the accessory unit is created shall occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the premises. Yeah, it goes on.
Holy cow.
So it was in there, so...
Interesting adder from the, what do you call it, the mother-in-law apartment type thing.
Mother-in-law, sure, yeah. It would have been somewheres the folks that stick that thirty-year-old kid, the one there, had to sue, its folks had to sue him, get rid of him. Okay, so we'll reference that? Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
So then, two-dash-five, section point two-oh-four and point two-oh-five, both have railroad.
Railroad runway?
Yeah, they don't have a railroad.
Anymore.
Probably can't ever again, no.
And just cross it off and keep on going.
Yeah, I guess so.
I don't think it'll come back.
I was gonna say, what adds a grown one coming back?
I think so.
Okay. If we're navigating on that one, we go to Article three, which is gonna be really quick, because it's pretty hard to discuss a blank page.
Right.
Okay, but now, Table four is gonna be a lot. So there's not very many pages here, but that's gonna be a lot of work.
Do I think of just for one meeting for that one, then?
Well, no, I don't think so. I think that if we're prepared, we can go right through this and go into five, because five isn't very big. So again, I'm gonna ask everybody to come prepared, as you saw that I was this evening. So I had every, I didn't look at anything, I went to the page, I had to highlight it, I had what I wanted to say, and that's right on your page. And when you come to the meeting, we talk about what you want, and we move on.
So what are we gonna do?
So nobody reads the page while we're here. The only time you read the page is if somebody is talking about something that you didn't see. But it's gonna be a very good way, once we're all done with this, we're gonna know this ordinance through and through, and, you know, because it'll be your baby. So anybody got a problem with four and five? You're still not really doing, you know, it's a lot, but it's not that much. So we're only talking about five. We're actually talking about less pages than we did today. I save them up, one through nine and one through five.
Don't think that Section four is, it's gonna eat up chap, it's gonna eat up Section six as well, too, because you're gonna, all the references and the... To the performance, and it's just gonna come up.
Because then Section six is twenty-five pages, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, twenty-nine pages. So our goal was to do two, but if we kind of get into this, we can, we can move along fairly quickly if we all are prepared. Okay. Anybody got questions?
Do you want to discuss the next meeting?
Yeah, what about the next meeting? So it's July second, anybody want to change the date? I quite frankly want to have Madam Secretary here.
And I don't know that I can do it that day.
So what, what do you want?
It doesn't matter, the following Monday would be council meeting, so it has to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the following week.
Tuesday? Chris, you got your calendar?
She's talking about Tuesday of the following week, or two...
Tuesday, Tuesday, yeah. We're just deleting the week of the board. That's good for you, Larry?
Yeah.
Christie?
Yeah.
Me, too.
All right, we make it Tuesday, July tenth.
Okay, so let's do four and five, and do, and do as much of six as you can. Because like Chris said, four and six are kind of interrelated. And when we get to thirteen, we've done thirteen fairly recently, so the side ordinance should be fairly quick. What do you guys think about putting the definitions in the front, instead of the back?
I think you should.
Yeah.
Okay. Kind of a technical writing. Sounds kind of, see, they're technical write-ups all the time, with our definitions up front.
Yeah, it does kind of make sense, you know, because otherwise, if you're, you don't know their back.
You don't know until you get there.
They're even, you know, they go there.
Public?
So since you're much more computer savvy than me?
Yes.
Okay. We don't, you get to contact Mr. Keithy.
I have a, no problem.
Okay, cool, all right, so chair report. Public comment, thank you very much, appreciate your attendance and your comments. So those of you in the audience, we're going over our zoning ordinance from point A to point Z in entirety, and public input would be appreciated, so if you want to come in and find out what we're about, instead of just watching on TV, feel free. We're here at seven-thirty, our next meeting will be July tenth at seven-thirty. Okay, chair report, I have none. Call for adjournment?
So...
Eight forty-six?
All right, so...
Call up paper?
Aye.
We're out of here. We're out of here.